It's time to bring the McComb Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. Time is 7:04. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Provenzano is, um...
Absent.
Absent. He called me, he said he had a conflict and he couldn't make it.
Very good. Mr. Oliver is present, Mr. Tuckfield is present, Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Bentley.
Here.
Mr. Kuzminsky.
Here.
All members present save Mr. Provenzano who's absent, excuse, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to exclude member Provenzano from any and all roll call votes.
Motion for that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hardy, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes. Approval of the minutes, uh, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I think there was one, uh, modification that is on our desk this evening. Unless there's any other corrections, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. What I thought about doing on this is taking seven, putting it up, and then...
I think we're on minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, the minutes, that's right. I jumped ahead of myself.
No worries. Uh, I think we have a change, uh, some wording on the title for C on page four should add high density. I believe that's not in the copy received in our packet, so I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, October the first, uh, contingent on the addition of the, uh, modifications we have on our desk this evening.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield with the addition?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bentley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, approval of the agenda. Just a little housekeeping on this agenda tonight. Item 7A and 7B, there was, um, we heard part, we heard it last week, our last meeting, and there was some confusion on the notices. So, the easiest way to handle this was to, the petitioner decided that they were gonna postpone it for tonight. And then we're gonna bring it back November 5th?
November 5th.
Yes. And that's when we're gonna bring it back. And in lieu of the confusion we had with the, with the notices, generally I don't, um, bring it back to the public, but at that meeting I will bring it to the public. This way, if anyone didn't get a chance to speak on them two items, they will be able to at that time. So if anyone's here for that, I just wanna, uh, let the residents know that. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but, um, also that is gonna get postponed, okay? Sir, if you wanna come to the podium, you could ask a quick question, but we cannot take questions on this item.
My only question is on the postponement of 7B. This would be the second postponement in a row, and people have shown up both last meeting and this meeting, and the postponements make it hard on the residents to keep showing up to meetings. Some people are changing, uh, a lot of schedules and all that to be here. So that really isn't fair to the residents.
Well, on behalf of the township, we're sorry, but we still have to do, we still have to follow procedure, and that's all about, that's about all we're gonna do with this tonight, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, hold on. If you're gonna leave, just give us one second, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify on that item, um, to make sure that I understand this correctly. We are postponing items A and B to next meeting to make sure that all of our paperwork is properly filed, uh, so that we can continue with this item, is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good, thank you.
Does everyone understand that on the board?
Fully understand.
Okay. Everyone?
I, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Being that, I need a motion to move these.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and make that motion to move it to the meeting of 11:720.
Okay. And I also need a motion.
11:05.
11:05. 11:05.
11:05, thank you.
And I'll second that.
Motion for Mr. Kuzminsky to bring these two items to the meeting of November the 5th. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay. Now I also need a motion to move these items. Bring this to...
So now we're...
Well, now we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to six.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
Why don't you give a five-minute break for the, for the people that would like to leave?
Yeah, okay, well, let's have a fi, let's have a two-minute break. If anyone wants to leave, they could leave now. This time, we start the meeting. Item six.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we moved the items, uh, 7A and B to next meeting. Uh, I believe we still have to have item five on the agenda, if I'm...
Oh, approval of the agenda, okay, there we go. Can I have the agenda approved?
I'll make a motion, we approve the amended agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, support?
Support.
For Mr. Tuck, oh, Mr. Hardy, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Now, we'll go to item six. 6A, general design plan Deerfield PUD, permanent parcel 0814-300-013 and 0814-400-012. Located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, half mile east of Card Road, section 14, 23 Mile Road Acquisition LLC Petitioner. Mr. Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, um... The applicants, basically, are providing eighty, or I'm sorry, yeah, eighty-five assisted living units as part of this planned unit development, twenty-eight detached ranch-style condominium units, and a hundred and ninety-two single-family units. The single-family units are all seventy by one-twenty lots or larger, and, um, basically for, uh, for that area, um, they, they don't exceed the three units per acre. The PUD itself, uh, I guess I would say doesn't provide, um, a great deal of, um, uniqueness to it. It does provide some open space areas, but it, it does provide a couple benefits to the township. Number one, it allows us to align, uh, what they're calling Deerbrook Drive with, um, what's the name of that, so?
Remar.
Uh, Remar Farms Drive. And, um, also, uh, deals with a larger issue, um, which has to do with the cost of running the sewer main, uh, from 23 up to 23 and a half mile, uh, the length of the property. It also does introduce a mix of uses in there, which is consistent with the PUD. Now, your job as a planning commission tonight is to determine, number one, that it meets the zoning requirements, number two, that it meets the eight standards for special land use, and, uh, number three, you must determine that the PUD benefits outweigh a conventional development. If you find these, um, if you find this development to be consistent with those standards for special land use and find it consistent with the PUD standards, we would then recommend approval of this PUD.
Is that it?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one. To Mr. Maher, you mentioned zoning requirements. Which, which requirements would you generally have us looking for on a PUD is...
Well, you know, I guess when you take a look at any, uh, you know, any development, you start out with what the core requirements are. So if it's multifamily, um, or assisted living, you would look at those standards, then you would look at any deviations from those standards to see if you find them fitting, based on the design of the PUD, you know, in...
So, so not necessarily the zoning standards as the parcel is zoned, but for the components that they have on it, how does it, how does it match with how we have that?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Petitioners, do you have anything to add to this?
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
I'm John Delisle, I'm with PEA, 59255 Van Dyke, Washington Township.
Thank you.
And, yeah, just to supplement what was mentioned in, uh, the criteria, in particular the eight standards for the special land use, want to address some of those and the uniqueness of the site. And there's been a progression of, uh, how this development should move forward prior to it ever, you know, being on paper and submitted to the township. But we looked at individual, um, rezonings, um, there's two parcels involved. The old Austin Catholic Academy was looking at this site. There was speculation on that triangular piece, um, in the southeast corner to, um, go towards a commercial zoning. We actually wanted to create, uh, kind of a homogeneous development of, of different residential uses, and we didn't wanna risk someone coming down the road and saying, "Well, you know what, we wanna put a, a strip retail center up in front here instead of this assisted living," and then it, then it's gone. There was talk about consistency of signage and colors, you know, to show that they're all together. There's just, you know, folks in different phases of their lives. We've got the single-family product, and then we've got a, a multifamily product geared towards seniors, and then we've got a senior living building up near the front. Eight standards for the special land use, really one through five and, and number eight all talk about the harmonious and, um, design and that it not be a detrimental use to the area. We think the, you know, the balance of the uses, the introduction of some single-family lots in this area to support the surrounding, um, economy, the local centers that are there, rather than duplicate and, and have more empty centers. We thought this was a great use of the site. As far as the adjacent areas, we've got the river, obviously, to the, to the east, and we've got, um, some nice wetlands over on the northwest. We've managed to preserve those areas and really not impact any adjacent properties in any negative way. You mentioned that we, we lined up our entrance with the Remar Farm subdivision. We also have a second means of ingress and egress, which is substantially away from that. So good access. And then, you know, the future setup. And the PUD, the purpose and intent of the PUDs, you know, there was, there was like five points mentioned, and, you know, the provision of public services, utilities, you know, we're also extending that collector route, which is, you know, the eighty-six-foot wide right-of-way running north-south, which could give you a future connection to the north at 25, or 24. Twenty-one inch sanitary sewer obviously opens up the potential for development and growth in the future as well. So, with, with that in mind, the, um, the other two points within the special land use talk about the convenience of the proposed location. Obviously, we have a corner that's undeveloped at North Avenue. There is speculation on extending that, um, public pathway to the east, which would allow people in this development to flow to a, probably a commercial corner in the future. And the, um, access for health, safety, welfare issues, you know, we, we did make sure to have the, uh, senior living up near the front, which, you know, there's often comments about the frequency of use or need of access for any emergency vehicle. Those uses are up near the front on 23 Mile Road. So, we hope that you would find, you know, that this development, which preserves fifty-two acres, some, uh, half of which is open space and twenty-two acre pond, and then we're actually considering as well a conservation easement on some of the wetlands and woodlands in the area to prevent any future development.
Okay.
So with that, I would open it up to any questions you might have.
Questions on this?
Just one if I have, Mr. Chairman. If, if this project happens to go through, when is your start date?
They would like to start, um, probably end of next year, but we certainly would have to go through the engineering process to...
Fine, I know that, that's why we just, you know, so if everything hit right, you'd go like the third quarter of 2020?
They're looking at the shortest path, yes. Whatever, to get them to market soon, yes.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? I, I got a question, a couple questions. If, if this project's, uh, gets moving, what is the first step you're gonna take? You got senior living, you got single-family homes, and you got in the back, what does the back set up as?
Single-family would run south to, all the way to the north end, and the other uses are up in the, uh, southeast, so...
So what would be the, would, would this be phased, or how would you set that up?
Single-family would proceed first, and that would involve, you know, the extension of the road, the sewer, and that would give support to, you know, make those substantial improvements.
So the first print that we would see would basically show the senior living as future senior living?
Yes.
Okay. It would show the single-family laid out through the engineering?
Yes.
The pond would probably be put in?
Pond would be put in, be one of the first things with the earth moving.
Okay. Is there gonna be, uh, continuous water in the pond, or will it be drained out?
There would be continuous water in the pond at, at a sufficient depth, um, you know, to allow it to...
Engineered depth?
Yeah.
Somehow, okay. All right. And this path that you talked about going to the east, describe it.
The public sidewalk.
Oh, the public sidewalk, okay.
And 23 Mile Road.
There it is, all right.
We know the river's there, and it wasn't...
Yeah, 'cause you got me a little confused, I'm thinking, how are we getting through that river?
Oh.
Public sidewalk, that, I understand. And that would be a help?
Yeah.
That would be a help to move people.
Recent 23 Mile Road improvements did not include that, but we understand it's being discussed.
Right. Okay. And is there any, I see you got like, on, on the west side of that property, it's a wooden path or a chipped path?
Yeah, we did...
Can you describe that, please?
We did change that to an asphalt path, so the maintenance on that, um, would not be as...
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, we, we did alter that to an asphalt path, but it's something to get into that open space that's there, and also to view the, the wooded wetland areas.
How close are you to the water and sewer department from that path?
I believe their property backs up...
Okay.
...to the, uh, the wooded wetland area, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. All righty. And, and the stub to the west is on the, going to the adjacent farm?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Adjacent vacant.
Property, yep. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, just a couple of follow-up questions?
Yeah.
Either for legal or for engineering or something. By your own admission, sitting there, you said you're gonna go with the single families first, correct?
That's correct.
And then you're gonna do the senior living. You are, when do you think the senior living would be put in? A year later?
The, the demand is there for, you know, a project to proceed.
Okay.
Very soon. Not at this location in particular, but within the community and the adjacent communities. So we know that the need is there. We wouldn't move forward with that until that sewer and that road is brought in and that work done to establish that detention basin, which is all part of the single-family piece.
Okay. Question either for legal or, or engineering. Being they're gonna start with the, with the single-family and us, if we approve the putt as it is, and they now, five years later, decide that that senior living isn't coming in, and now they wanna develop it as something else, how is the township locked into that? What do you guys think?
You know, it's, it's being approved as a PUD. It's basically formed under a development agreement, and, um, in order for it to change, both parties would have to agree to whatever that modification would be. Otherwise, it would be basically left undeveloped until such time that they found a, uh, acceptable use for both parties.
Okay.
Or the township, and if there's a failure to comply with it, the township at some point obviously could, could go to court to enforce the, the terms of the...
Of the PUD?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you legal, and thank you engineering.
Okay, anyone else?
I guess I have one question, and I'm just wondering why you wouldn't go with the senior part first, because, like you said, there is a demand in the township for that. And if you had that up front and first, you'd be getting revenue and people moving in there, and maybe the young people who have family in that senior development wanna live close to their family and loved ones. So my point being is, I think that that should be the first part of the project, the senior development, because it is up front, and, and those are just my thoughts, and, and that's how I feel, and I'd like to know why you wouldn't build that first and go with the single-family housing first?
If it was acceptable to the township to proceed in, in that manner, and we can provide the access and the sewer and, and have it prepped for, for its use, it could be considered.
Okay, I'm, I'm not asking, telling you how to do it, I'm just asking why you wouldn't proceed with that first, so that was my question.
Well, with the construction of the detention basin and, uh, and the extension of the sewer, and I guess it would defer to the, you know, the engineer and the planner as well, as to whether that could be phased or deferred, you know, that discussion would have to be had, but, um, it had always been the intent to proceed with that work since we were putting those dollars into that, uh, you know, needed stormwater management improvement and extending the sewer past those, those properties.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the petitioner too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to carry on, uh, further on that, uh, issue, your intent initially was to develop the single-family. Does that mean just the roads, the underground storm, the, uh, retention basin, um, all the, uh, the underground, uh, development, uh, but not necessarily every one of those lots with a, with a home, um, so that you could start the assisted living, um, facility? Or were, was your intent to make sure that all of those lots had been...
No, it was not our intent to, to have one-hundred percent build out of the single-family prior to moving to the other two developments. No, those would proceed as, as soon as we could.
Okay, thank you.
Provided the interests is there.
And I had one other question.
Go ahead.
Has there been any discussions with, uh, the two school districts, New Haven and Chippewa Valley, related to the way it's been, uh, presented in our, in our documents? Um, and, and the split, uh, rather than, uh, maybe taking other properties, uh, and, you know, balance those out and make this, this one development, uh, one or the other school district?
That was put out there, I know the, the school districts have issued their letters, and they're on board and accepting of what split was agreed upon, and that stuck strictly to the physical split limits. So that's what we had, were directed to do, and that's what we did.
And will that be advertised if this project goes ahead? Which lots are really part of which community?
Yes, they would now.
If I may, just to do a follow-up, and I, Charlie, you knew, you know yourself, no school district is gonna give up any type of...
No.
No land. It's either, that's the way it's been divided, and that's the way it's gonna stay, they're not giving it up at all.
You're gonna build in, if your property is in school district A, you're going to A. If it's in B, you're going to B. It's just that simple.
Yep, it's a simple process.
We, we had one, I think, since I've been here, and I think that was, um...
North Avenue?
North Avenue property and...
Across the street from the golf course.
Sycamore Golf Course, they traded some, or there was an agreement, but not easy to come by.
No. And that was some years ago, too, Charlie.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I got one, another question. On the senior living, uh, do you even have units? Like, what's your idea for units? How many units you, you expect to put in there?
Well, we've indicated the eighty-five. We have not settled upon a, a building, because each of the different users that may come into this base have their, their own footprint that they like to, to use. I know we've offered one as a guide to show the potential build outs and the potential use of courtyards, et cetera, and the parking, but, uh, we have not, you know, looked at the internal workings of the buildings, just because we don't have a final building yet.
So, would it be a two-story, or you still don't know that even?
Yeah, it would be multiple stories, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had a few questions. Uh, the first one I think would be to Pat, uh, this is more of a procedural one. We've got it marked down as a general design application. I just wanted to verify, I know in the past typically our first PUD look is, I think, generally turned conceptual. Are we looking at this conceptually? What, what stage are we at?
Uh, we, we've already had this in front of us as a concept sketch, and...
I saw it as the rezoning, only I didn't remember the concept.
Uh, I don't think we've had a rezoning on this site. I think it's only been in under a concept sketch.
Must be.
And, um, you know, our, our next step, or this step, is the general design phase, and they're also requesting, uh, preliminary site condominium approval at this time for the single-family. They are not requesting site plan approval for the multi or for the assisted living, so those will come back as site plans.
Okay. Very good. I think a couple of my questions were answered as far as phasing order. I did have some relatively specific questions that may not be appropriate here, I'm not sure, some of them might be in the edge, so, um, if any of them are out of place, by all means, let me know. I was curious about the emergency access that you have drawn in between the, um, the building and the quadplexes. You noted specifically as not general access, I was just curious, why, why have that in there, but not as a general access, uh, drive?
We normally wouldn't put, um, you know, the paved access between the two uses, although we know it functions as a useful means of ingress, egress, a secondary ingress, egress to each of the properties for the emergency vehicles. You know, we, we've looked at grass paved type uses, but then, you know, the township rightfully brings up, you know, the, the maintenance of that during the snowfall, and, you know, it can get messy, so we've only remarked it for fire use, um...
Would it have a gate over it? Would it be, would it be blocked?
Um, we had proposed a gate, and I'm not sure the fire department is really excited to have the gate.
To have that there?
And I know that's one thing we're gonna be looking at at, at the site plan level, but we would rather not put it in and simply sign it. There's not a whole lot of advantage to using that pavement stuff, um, unless perhaps you've gone in the wrong entrance, but, you know, there's no advantage to it, it's just, it's there, and we pushed it towards the back so that it wouldn't be...
Understood.
Yep.
Uh, second question, and this is to follow up on one of Mr. Oliver's, uh, questions. I just wanna make sure I understand it. Uh, he asked if you were doing two stories, and I believe you said multiple stories?
Yeah.
Are, are you restricting it to two stories, or is there the option for more than that?
Uh, we've proposed two stories.
Okay, so, so you'd be fine in the PUD agreement with it being limited to two stories?
If the township is open to a third story, we could put that out there for our user to consider. And where that would come into play is the, uh, senior living use and the first level being maybe more community uses, and then those two stories, you know, rising up above that.
So, so if I can...
There's many different options.
So if I can return the, the question back to, you have it in as two-story, but you would like the flexibility to go to three, as it's... but you would like the flexibility to go to three as it stands?
If the township is willing to offer that, we would accept that option, yes.
Okay, 'cause I didn't notice it anywhere in the drawing. It was something that I was looking for. I know I personally don't feel as comfortable with three as two, although we have done three, I think, in other areas. That's just, that's my personal preference. My personal preference as it relates to the community. Mr. Maher and Mr. Van Tiflin, just something I wanna understand, because this speaks to the PUD, the township benefiting, benefiting and the developer benefiting, which is typically what a PUD is done for. Can you help me out a little bit with the sewer? It seems like the sewer is the main piece that we're receiving. What is, what is different about the sewer than, than other parcels? Are they having to put a bigger one in because it's serving another development? What, what distinguishes it here that it's an advantage to us to put it in?
In most other areas of the township, the, the main trunk line sewer runs down one of the major roads. So there's a major sewer that's on 23-mile road. In this area of the township, because of the way the river falls, we could not run the sewer up Card Road and then run it all the way down towards the river at 24-mile and up Card Road to where the river crosses north of 24. It would make the sewer too deep going through essentially that hill that, it's not really a hill, but it's, it's a higher area that's between the cemetery, Foss Road area, and going down towards the river. So the decision was made many years ago, in that area of the township, we would run the sanitary sewer essentially along the river up a collector road between North Avenue and Card Road at that half-mile. And then that would be the sewer that would run up to 24 and then across towards Foss Road and would serve up Card. That way, the sewer wouldn't have to be artificially deep. We would like to keep the sewer as shallow as we can. We don't like putting sewers in subdivisions like this. We've had other issues in other areas of the township, but in this area, this was really the only choice. So we, we've met with a developer on many occasions to talk about how that sewer would, would run up there. We've talked about different materials and how to run the leads, because leads on real-deep sewers don't work all that well. So we've tried to, you know, figure all that out before they even really submitted the PUD plan.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, if they were to just try to service their development, which in theory they could, and that's all they'd be responsible to, it would cut off a section of the township from develop, development, because we don't have a good way to bring sewer to it?
That's correct.
Okay. Which is, does seem to be a major advantage given back to us.
Yes. Otherwise, we would be forced to put in another pump station, and we don't wanna put pump stations in if we don't have to. They require a lot of maintenance, and there's, you know, occasions, things fail, yes.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Obviously, building out infrastructure in the township is important, and we appreciate the, we appreciate you working with our, our team here at the township to, to make that happen. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? Being none, I'll bring it to the public on this item. Does anyone have anything on this item they wanna speak on? Being none, bring it back to the board for comments, motions. Mr. Maher, what are you looking for us to do?
Mr. Chairman, you know, our standard process would typically beat a table after the public hearing. Since we had no public comments, if the commission is comfortable making a decision and you feel it's consistent with the standards, I'd recommend you go ahead and make that motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, would it be, the way you have it there in your recommendation, the standards for special land use and finding consistent with the putt standards, we recommend approval of the putt?
I think that would be an appropriate motion if you felt that.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. Okay, motion by Mr. Kuzminsky.
Mr. Chairman, like a roll call vote?
Yes. To move forward on the PUD, second by Mr. Hardy. Vote, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kuzminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that is a unanimous six-nothing.
Motion passes. Gentlemen, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we, we would then need a second motion. They're, they're also requesting at this time the preliminary site condominium approval as well.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Mr. Hardy?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, there's just one...
Recommendation to the board, by the way.
One thing I'd like to point out, and I'm sure that engineering and the developer can, can sort this out. I just had a concern with the one parcel, and I don't know the number that it is, but as you come in the main drive and turn left on the first side street, it's the first parcel on your left, so it'll be on the east side. There's a easement going through it. Just if there's any way you can rework that, it looks like it might potentially cause some issues for building of accessory structures and whatnot in there. If nothing that can be done, so be it, but that's my only concern with the, the site plan, if you guys will look into that. Thank you.
Okay. We still have a motion by Mr. Hardy, and do I have a second on that?
Mr. Kaminski, second.
Kuzminsky, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion also passes. Gentlemen, could you check with engineering on that issue that Mr. Tuckfield discussed? Okay.
Will do.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, six C, impervious surface requirement discussion. Mr. Maher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't had a chance to sit down with Mr. Van Tiflin on this issue, so I'm gonna ask that we postpone this until the following meeting.
Okay.
Do you, do you have a motion on that?
No.
No. Okay. All right. Item eight, public comments, non-agenda items. Anything from the public? This is non-agenda. You're welcome to come speak.
Frank Kuzmona, 16188 Jenny Drive. I was a little bit disappointed by all the postponements in the perception that it leads. I have questions, but I know this isn't a forum of question and answer. What was the defect in the notice that was required? When did that notice defect become known? And could it have been avoided that all the people came out on items seven A and seven B, just to be told that there was not going to be any discussion or decision on those agenda items? Why did the chair not tell the residents that they could still speak about the, those items as non-agenda items, rather than having them all get up and leave? So, when was the agenda posted? In other words, there's gotta be a more elegant way of handling these matters, so that the residents don't take the time out of their busy schedules to come out here and make com, public comment, either in their, in favor or against these items, just to be disappointed? I can also say that we have issues. I don't know whether or not traffic studies are being required for each and every one of these new developments, especially high-density changes in zoning. I'd ask whether or not anyone could answer that question. Also, you know, on the issue of our, our contract with the Great Lakes Water Authority, my reading of that contract is, is that we are actually lessening our maximum flow rate from approximately 25 million gallons daily down to 22 to 23. Now, if we continue to develop and expand, it would stand to reason that there'd be more demand on the water system. Well, the contract itself provides that if we exceed the maximum daily flow rate, that Great Lakes Water Authority reserves the right to, and it was this way under Detroit Water and Sewage as well, to number one, not provide the pressure requirements that are part of the contract, and number two, jack the rates. So I think there needs to be a pretty comprehensive approach to the development of certain areas of the township with these factors in mind. Finally, if we're looking at water and sewage as being necessary to upcharge or significantly increase the charges to the residents, why not make the developers fund a, a repair and maintenance fund for the, the purpose extending out, so when those developments have to have their infrastructure upgraded or repaired or maintained, that, that fund would be available. Now, that would make development more costly, so a policy decision is being made to shift costs to residents and spare the developers. And would that discourage development? Perhaps. Would that not grow the tax base, perhaps? But as I said, we've got issues in a total way of looking, approaching our development in this township that I don't believe are being comprehensively addressed. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the ability to talk to you candidly about these matters, and I really appreciate your service to the township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Close that portion. Commissioners' comments?
I just have one comment. I'd like to thank the board, as being a senior, for putting the outdoor pickleball courts in. I know we've talked about this for years, and multitasking ice rink was a great idea, and unfortunately, it couldn't stay open that long, but I'd like to thank Roger and all the board members for putting that project forward until the permanent courts get put in. So, thank you to the board.
May I have a follow-up to that? That was told to Sal over a year ago, to do that by me, over a year ago, and he just did it now. So I'm just telling you, it took him a long time to think about doing it, but thank you for that.
At least it's, at least it's done, and we had an opportunity to play outdoors a little bit, and I know that a lot of the seniors that play really appreciate it, and I look forward to the permanent courts being put in. And, and the improvements that were done indoor in the rec center, the permanent nets that were put in, the whole, the whole thing's a class act, and I just think the board needs recognition for that.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bentley?
As, as item, item C has been postponed, and as it relates to item six A that we just went through, and the design of, which will be coming, and it'll go through engineering and certainly be looked at. Just as a, a request, I guess, for me, anyway, when you talk about impervious surfaces and that, if, if you could help us with, with our review of some of these things, like the PUD we just did tonight, in, in whether or not you've did a preliminary check of whether or not the percentage of impervious surfaces has been at least looked at, or what the recommendation is as a, as a maximum for these developers as they develop this land, so that we're, we're able to accommodate it with our storm and sewer systems, as well as our, our creeks and, and other waterways, because we're using up that pervious
Areas.
surfaces, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Com Township Board Trustee Liaison, Mr. Kuzminsky.
The only thing that came up at the board was, is that the final plan for the library was approved by the, by the board.
All right?
Yep. So they, whenever the shovels start getting in the ground, they'll start...
Moving forward?
They'll be moving forward.
Good. Good improvement.
Thank you.
ZBA liaison update?
Mr. Chairman, I think there's been one meeting since we last met. Actually, there has not, because our last meeting would have been after the last one, so I think I have brought everyone up to date on ZBA at this time.
Thank you. Planning Department items, Mr. Maher?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll have adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shudo?
Support.
Support by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.